Okay, I call this February 6, 2013 City Council Work Session to Order. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams here. Councilmember Ayer?
Here.
Councilmember Madison? And Councilmember Gavia?
Yes, so with the mayor, we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay, and the no reports presentations, review of the Charter of Bill Rowley and Marie Garrett. So, and we have a copy of the Charter here in front of us.
I'll go first. If we go ahead and start on the term limits piece that we were going to talk about. We've looked at that, and the term limits are only, of course, for the mayor. And there's been some discussion of having two full terms instead of a partial term and a full term for the mayor. After some research, we think that probably we're going to need to go ahead and have it passed at the legislature rather than by home rules since it is an election matter. If that's something that you desire, we can certainly get it into this year's hopper and see if we can't get it through if that's, if that would be a desire of the council on that.
Are you talking about just the mayor's term limits or is it for all city council members?
The other council members are not permanent.
I know, but I thought we were talking about...
Right now, we're just talking about the mayor. We are talking about the mayor, but we also consider everybody being on the same schedule.
If that's the desire of the council and the mayor, then we can, we'll put it, we can put it together any way that you will give us direction, but it probably needs to be sooner than later so we can move it on through.
Correct. And what about the development authority? That would have to be a charter, anyway.
No, it won't. We can do a development authority by resolution or ordinance under state law. We can't do a redevelopment authority. But a development authority or a downtown development authority are things that we can do. So if you desire, we can, we can by resolution put together a development authority. It has to have between seven and nine members. They have to be citizens of the city. And we, and there are a couple of other little things on it, but wait with me just a moment. I'll go through these with you. You can only have one member of the governing authority as a member of the Board of Directors. They have to be taxpayers. And basically, the powers that you could, really pretty much unfettered powers in terms of the ability to issue bonds and acquire property, sell property, lease property, both personal and real, make loans. The, but it all has to tie into the, to develop, promote commerce, industry, and employment opportunities for the public good and the general welfare. So we couldn't do anything with a development authority if you want to do something on housing. But otherwise, you could. On a development authority, is, as you brought this to me, it was really as it would relate to right now, MARTA. Because MARTA has a piece of property, and they're either going to, either do an RFP with a private developer, or they will work with the development authority. If you desire to do that, if the city desires to do that, we can form one. But what we, we would have to, in a fairly short period of time, have some kind of work plan of what you would like to do with that property to present to the MARTA board. I've just discussed it with one of the board members, and she's told me that we have about a six-month reservation, if you will. If we, if we contact MARTA and by resolution say that we would like to be a development partner with them, or the development board would like to be a partner with them, then they have about, we have about six months to come up with a concept and a plan and to go forward with them on it. Now, it's really, we can put together a development authority that has as much control as you really desire to have as a council in terms of how you want to structure what they do. You can, especially in terms of if they're going to, if they're going to do bonds, and we have to put the full faith and credit of the city up to do those bonds. And we can, we can pretty much tell them what they can buy, what they can sell, how they can do it, when they can do it, under the circumstances of how they can do it, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the development authority wherein it would be our credit that was being put up to do bonds.
Marie, do you have any comment on any of this?
I was just going to add to that. You know, it really becomes the development arm for the city. It serves as a catalyst for other development, especially if there's a partnership between the city's development authority and the private side, or in this case quasi-government with MARTA. The beauty of the bond-inducing power of the authority is that it does not take away from borrowing capacity of the city themselves against your general fund. Even though we are the underwriter, we don't tap the ability and capacity of your general fund to be borrowed against. So that is the beauty there. The other thing outside of, you know, the scope, and I agree with, with Bill, we do need to be very clear on what their duties and responsibilities are, and that there really should be a very tight framework, because again, they are your development arm. I would see other projects listed, and that they, that they could do joint development and planning with, you know, agencies of the state, or sister cities, or quasi, you know, governments such as a MARTA authority. But I'd also like to see the opportunity that the development authority could be tapped to assist the city in their own needs, a future city hall. They could become the landlord to the city, in that they could go out, purchase the property, develop the site, and then lease back, and then those lease rates would be the revenue stream to retire the bond. So I'd like that to be part of their scope. The same of which with the recreation authority, that we would want to have very strict terms of what their authority and responsibilities are, in that looking at parks and that they could assist in the development of those parks. We wouldn't want to get them involved in the operations, because you'll have a recreation department doing that, but this is strictly just capital improvements that they would follow. But we do need a plan, and we will need to, once the board is appointed and ratified by the council. You know, I would want to get in front of them as soon as possible to get them trained, get them to understand what their authority is.
Development authorities.
The development authorities, and the recreation authority too, when you're ready to do that. But creating these authorities now with this framework enables you, when you're ready to seat them, you've already gone through the process of structuring them and creating them. Your, and the city attorney, Bill and I have been talking about this, your charter, you know, describes the creation of boards, commissions, and authorities. But because a development authority is so critical and has a decision-making power on bond inducement, and you, the city, are the underwriter, I just felt it was best to create them individually with a set of powers and set of guidelines, and in a scope of what their work would be.
Maybe we can set the guidelines.
And you're talking about putting that in the legislation, or you're doing this by home rule?
Well, development authorities, you can, you, there's, there's a code section that you can, that they're created, and it's 3662-4, and so it's state law. There's a state law for development authorities, there's state law for redevelopment authorities, there's state law for recreation authorities. This is development authority. And it outlines what they can and can't do, and how they can do it. But what we do, and how we control them, is really in the intergovernmental agreements that, that we have with them when we're the underwriter. We're, we're almost like the bank, that we can outline all the scope of everything that they can do in a certain property, how they can, they can do all those things.
And the first test is, what is the benefit to the city? So, you know, where they would do joint partnerships, I mean, you would not want them, I would imagine, having the ability to run on their own, to align themselves with the recreation authority of the city of Atlanta to build a stadium. You would not, you know, they could have that power, but you wouldn't, I think, would want to give them that, that much rein. Again, it really should be, the test should be, does this, does this comport with the city's overall goals and vision of the community? And, you know, are you looking at strategic areas of the city where you can serve as a catalyst in using your development arm? When you look at the recreation authority, in my past experience in other communities, many times you can use both of those authorities together to create and develop a joint project. Development authority can be used to purchase the land. Recreation authority can be used to improve the property for a park, so, you know...
But theoretically, the development authority could do both, also.
Oh, yes, they could. They could, but...
If it's a recreation facility, it can be run under the...
Right, exactly.
Just because it's a stadium rather than an office building, it can be run under the development authority.
Correct.
You're saying that you could have a development authority without a rec authority?
Correct. Yeah, but here's the thing that I would just key you in on. You don't yet know the partnership opportunities that are out there.
Yes.
In going with a development authority, they may, if the MARTA project works out, that might be one project of the development authority, city hall might be another, or it might be a joint complex with public safety. So they're going to have a lot on their plate. Then you have a recreation authority that's saying, well, we really want to, you know, get some funds for capital improvements, and we've got this 20-year master plan for recreation, but we want to accelerate the development of it. But we don't want to strain ourselves with our borrowing capacity and our borrowing ability to buy the land and also buy, you know, the equipment. The other thing that could happen is if a complex of land is purchased for the development of city halls, public safety, and even courts, there might be enough land in there that your rec authority will say, well, why don't you try and pick up another five acres, and we can create a park, an open space component to that. And then the city, as the tenant of, you know, the space, could then use that for events and festivals and activities as well, and, you know, work with the recreation department. So there's, there's a lot of ability to bridge the two, and, so you have that opportunity if you choose to use them in that, that form. But we would want to describe that too, in their overall makeup of what their duties and authorities are, that they could enter into, you know, agreements or joint efforts.
I want to make sure I understand. The alternative to not having a development authority is that, say, MARTA would come along and put out RFPs, and then MARTA would work with private developers and make the decisions on how, say, the Brookhaven Station would be developed.
And you would be a participant in the community to comment? You would not...
With no other place at the table.
Correct. You would not have a decision-making position.
But that's correct. But also, the development authority has the opportunity, you know, even beyond that, to provide certain incentives to, you know, employ somebody who wants to build the office building. Unlike current, the development authority could own that building and lease it to the tenant.
They do now at Crowder Summit.
Yeah, so, you know, so there are, there are opportunities, you know, beyond MARTA where the development authority...
Oh, I understand, but I just want to make sure that, that I understand that it's imperative that if we want to have a voice in something as big as, say, the MARTA development, the best way for us to have a real seat at the table is through the development authority? Well, it gives you that seat. Absolutely. Now, for the, for the MARTA project, you know, that's in your city, and if it requires rezoning or it requires any kind of plan amendment, it's still before the mayor and council. But if you are a participant in, you know, the financing of that as a financial partner in trying to create development opportunities, because the development authority is going to partner with somebody in the community, or it might be the end user, such as the case that I gave you about city hall. City hall would be the end user of the city, and they would develop the site for them.
And then the way, I think what I hear you saying is how then we, the council, control the development authority. I mean, you don't want this body that is out there being developing in a way that you don't agree with.
You have, you have some, you have some controls, but let's be clear. They are, they are, they have the ability to do certain things outside the realm of what you may or may not like. And that's why it's very important that you pick people of like mind that are going to be on that authority. The real control you have on that authority is you are the banker. Now, you know, if they want to do a pilot bond, where it doesn't really take anything except, except they want to go ahead and give somebody a tax abatement, and they may not, you may have no control on a pilot bond. So you want to make sure that the folks that are on there are thinking the way that you're thinking, because, you know, that, they can, they can take a piece of land and, and take away your taxable income for a period of time on that property that you won't see the taxes on. So you need to make sure that people that sit in there are thinking the way you think about, well, that's, that's in the best interest of the city. And that only comes with the people you pick to put on there. They have, they have autonomy on those things. The things that they don't have autonomy on is when they're going to do a bond, and it, a development authority is a mechanism for cities to be able to, to issue bonds when they can't issue bonds, and you just stand on the faith and full faith and credit of the village. And that's one way, that's basically one of the big things that, that happens with, with them. So what you're, so if we wanted to, we wanted to buy a piece of property, and, because we, we think that we're going to, we, we want to go ahead and develop it at some point in time. And now, it has to be for, it has to be for those uses, I told you, economic development. So you get in some, you've got to be careful of how you structure if you want to put city hall on it, because you can't be part of the leaseback on city hall. You're going to have to, you're going to have to probably buy out the lot that city hall's on, because you can't carry that property. Now, the development authority can buy the property, and it can be part, part and parcel of the thought process of what you're going to build, you know, you're wanting to build a commercial center. And then if you want to, at some point in the future, it says, well, city hall would be really good here. Well, the, you can sell that, if, say, you sold the property to a developer, the development authority did, okay? That developer could sell us an out parcel and put city hall within there. They could, they could lease it to us, but they couldn't lease it to us if the development authority was still the, the holder of the property. One of the ways that, one of the ways they, they work it is, is that the development authority is not a taxable entity. They don't have to pay, they don't have to pay the property taxes. And that's one of the advantages that, that developers have when they do leaseholdings. What we're talking...
That's what Semler has right now.
Probably so.
On Town Berkeley.
And, but what we're talking about with MARTA, MARTA right now wants to maintain a leasehold. They want to, they want to lease it, they'll lease it to the development authority. And we'd probably, the development authority would hold it. And, and then we'd lease it, we'd, we'd do a ground lease to a developer. There'd be a cash flow, there'd be a cash flow constraint. They're in the development authority, back to MARTA. MARTA could get cash flow through their own expenses. That's pretty much what they're talking about. If we want to put a city hall on it, we'd have to go to MARTA, we'd have to have them cut that piece out. We'd buy it, because we couldn't hold that piece as development authority, and have, have that public person post a city hall sitting on it. But there, it's very workable, it's doable, there's just steps that you would walk through on that. So is there value to do it? Absolutely. Does it give us the opportunity to work with MARTA and get this thing done? Yes, but you have to have a commitment that you're going to try to get it done within a six-month period, because they're going to issue the RFP. Do you have a lot more control about what you want in that place? Absolutely. Because it's probably your people that are going to make, are going to be out there talking to the public and deciding it, vetting it with you to see where it goes.
You know, from that standpoint, going back to, we do have control ultimately through planning and zoning, and there is, there is an overlay in place that addresses specifically that property and development and those types of things on the property. So to a certain extent, some of those controls are already in place, part of what we've adopted for, you know, as a zoning code, you know. And, you know, the question is, do we want market forces to work within the context of that framework that's already laid out? Or do we want to recreate another framework that we have a little bigger thumb on down the road? And again, I'm not opposed to the development authority, I just, you know, the whole MARTA thing, we've got to, we've got to think about how we move forward on that, and whether we move forward based on the market with existing controls, or whether we apply additional controls by putting the city on the hook for that.
Well, it also, you know, it goes beyond the MARTA opportunity. There's other opportunities. And going with your point on planning and zoning, that there are just by, you know, its, its own set of regulations, you know, create the bounds, if you will. And further than that, when you all develop your vision statement, and we develop the economic development strategy, you're going to be stating, you know, what are the thresholds of what you want to partner with? If a business comes in and they're bringing in 100 employees, you might say, yes, we want to partner with them. And who are our vehicles that can partner with them? We have a development authority. If they're bringing in 250 employees or 500, I mean, there are thresholds that could dictate levels of participation, and vehicles that would be available for those opportunities for participation. So there, there are other methods in which to encapsulate the abilities. But, you know, Bill is right, too. They, they have to, the members have to, have to get what your strategy is.
Let me ask you this. Besides the vetting process we have, which we talked about before, people on all are divisions and authorities. Suppose, and we'll have policies in place for conflicts. Suppose a member of the authority doesn't, has a sort of a once or twice removed interest in something, and we feel that it's a conflict and they feel it's not. How do we, how do we address that?
There is, there is a, it's actually addressed in the, in the state statute. It contemplates, you and I were talking about the problems of it, but the state statute actually contemplates what happens when there, when there is an issue of conflict of interest. It's pretty much follows all the ethical considerations that you're supposed to do anyway. You have to disclose, and if there's over $200, there's like a quarterly printing on, that you have to put a printed disclosure on it. You can't be there for any of discussion about it, you can't sit, you can't even sit there because of the appearance that you might undo the...
Who polices that, though?
Well, they would be subject to the ethics laws if they fail to do it. And both our ethics laws as well as the state...
And what authority would we have to reach in and say, we're going...
Your city manager's going to be staffing that. It's going to be very intimately involved with that authority because of the relationship back to mayor and council. That's, that's going to be first and foremost. The authority also will have their own attorney, but the city attorney will also be involved because of the bond underwriting and what goes on in advising the development authority. So, you know, you've got a lot of safeguards. You'll have the attorney for the development authority, you've got your city attorney that's going to be involved, and then you're going to have your key staff member, your city manager, involved. I would, I would expect your city manager to, to attend all those meetings, because they carry the message of mayor and council.
Okay.
So maybe that's the answer to what I was wondering about. You know, when you look at some of the criticisms or problems of our neighboring development authorities, sometimes the criticism is that they've given away large tax abatements for projects that were, what, not in distress, or a luxury hotel was going to be built there anyway, or, and at the end of the day, they give away so much of the tax base that you really wonder if it, if it's not in the end hurting the municipality. How do you, how do you prevent that?
Your city manager's sitting there, when they're talking about, and they'll, they'll have someone there, you know, attending their meeting, representing the developer that wants, or will be the developer that wants to participate, and they'll say they want to do this and this. And it's your city manager's job to reiterate what the vision is, what the economic development strategy is, and where the focus of the mayor and council are on certain areas of the city. It's going to be very...
But does the board have enough autonomy that they could say, well, Ms. Garrett, we don't really care, we want to put Times Square right down Peachtree anyway, because we think it's a great deal here?
The answer, I think, is yes.
Except for this, you're right, but until they come back to the city through the manager and they want underwriting, you're going to say no.
Or they want to be reappointed.
Right, or they want to be reappointed. And the other thing is, you know, again, sometimes these are self-policing, but other times they require a nudge. And if you have a member that has to constantly recuse themselves, or be asked to recuse themselves because of just the appearance of a conflict, again, that's your manager's job to bring that to y'all's attention and to have that conversation that it's best that you probably do not continue to serve, because it could hurt them, and, you know, it could be an ethics violation.
I think that what you, your best control is making good selections of the people on in first place.
Absolutely.
There's a, within the law, there's an initial term, there's, they start you on a staggered term basis here, and so you have the opportunity to look at half of them after two years, and you look at the other half after four.
Do we not set our own terms?
No, in the state law, there's a set of terms. It's all set out in the state law. I'll probably, I'll just pass a copy of this, because I'm, I'm sure you'll read it backwards and forth, and the whole thing is there.
Well, as we're talking to candidates, we...
Yeah, but you didn't understand it.
Well, they serve the pleasure of the mayor and council.
They have a term, they have a term under the state law here.
Okay. All right, so the appointment's got to be then truly noted.
I'll give you that, so you, for you to look through it all, and...
You know, I guess at this time, go back to the, to the original question. You know, the development authority, I can see a need for it at this point, but if, if we understand it to be something that we can, we can add it by resolution, I'm not sure that the recreation authority is, is necessary, and, you know, just getting too many boards out there that have this, you know, sort of autonomous authority. And if the development authority can cross over and do, you know, work both sides of that equation, to the extent we may need something different at some later date, we can pass it ourselves, and it can be in place relatively quickly.
Well, I'm not advising on the recreation authority that you seat those members yet. I'm just saying, set the framework up, so when you're ready to go, it's already done, and then you can go ahead and appoint when you're, when you're ready.
Except, you know, we may, there may be a push for that for some reasons. If it's there, there may be a push for something to be built, but yeah.
But I think too, and you might be thinking of commission versus authority, they are distinctly different.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Okay.
We'll, yeah, we'll discuss, we'll discuss that in more detail on what they, what they were discussing. So review of the relationship with the charter, Marie or Bill, into that.
Right.
I would just go through this a little bit, and it really ties in to your, the next one down there, the ethics and code of ethics that's already in place. Really, the mayor and council have general powers that are basically your 47 powers that are listed in the front. You have all, all the powers of the city. Those, those are your powers. The real question becomes is, how are they exercised? And, and that is, and that's the crux of what goes on. The mayor has specific powers, and that was under 301. And those specific powers are, reside over meetings of city council, set the agenda. However, if two other council members want something on a agenda, they can, they have an opportunity to do that, to play something on as long as two or more wanted on there. The mayor acts as the ceremonial head of the city. The mayor signs the orders, checks, and warrants to a level of authorization by the council.
What's, what section is this?
This is 301, my mayor.
Page 21 to 20.
Yes.
That is, line 301?
No, section.
Okay.
Page 20. Read, uh, 3.01. Article 3, executive branch. The mayor votes in terms on ties, makes all appointments of city officers as provided by the charter, subject to the confirmation of the city council, and, and serves a part-time capacity. The mayor also, under the powers of the city manager, is charged with the, or actually the city manager, is charged with, on recommendation to city council after prior review and comment by the mayor for the adoption of such measures as the city manager may deem necessary and expedient. Okay?
What does that say that?
It's, if you look under section 303, and it is paragraph 6, number 7... And it is paragraph six, number 719.
Okay.
Now, that's a, that's a, really a dotted line authority, but it is more of a, a political authority or expedient or a check for the city manager that's placed into this than, than the requirement. I don't know of any city manager that would not look at it as a requirement, but it's really, they do have that autonomy, and I point that out because it is the city manager form of government. The, the way the, the way the council exercises their power is as the group and their votes, and they're setting their policy and direction, and they, and they manage that through the city manager. The city manager actually does manage all the day-to-day operations, and it's, it's called out in the charter, and that would be in section 305, which is on page 23, line 751. Except for the purposes of inquiries and investigations under section 208 of this charter, the mayor and city council or its members shall deal with city officers and employees who are subject to the direct supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. And neither the mayor, city council, nor its members shall give orders to any such officer or employee either publicly or privately. So.
Expand on that.
That means that, that means that the manager manages all the departments and that, that you shouldn't call GIS and say, I want a map, for instance. Not that, not that it wouldn't give you a map, but, or you call, you call Public Works and said, there's a pothole over here. I want you to go fix it.
Not to do that.
Not to do that.
Not to do that.
Those are the, those are the not to dos.
Right.
Okay? Those are the kinds of things that you get to call Marie at 10 o'clock at night and say, there's a pothole and we've had two, we've, we've had two cars have flat tires tonight. Somebody needs to get out of here. But that's, 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 that's really the function. Now, it's really easy to do because that's what's problematic because everybody here wants to make sure that they do the direction of what you want to do. You already have a very loyal staff who wants to get things done for you. And so you put them in a bind if you actually ask them to do stuff because they know they're supposed to report to her. And at some point, you have to put onto them that you got, you got to quit doing this stuff. If you don't quit doing this stuff, you're, I'm going to have to do, I'm going to take, have to take corrective action on you. So it's really, it's really up to the mayor and council to self-police because you all carry all the, all the authority of the city, and when you go and look at a staffer and say, I need you to do this, they, they just.
They're going to do it.
They're going to do it, and then they know that they've broken the chain of command.
But is it appropriate to go through the same channels that say the public? Can, can you go ahead and put it on, see, click, fix?
Sure.
Can you tell your constituent who calls you or about the code of compliance to go ahead and call this person and say, oh?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
So it's not like a protective order where you can have indirect contact?
It's like, just understand that you don't want to do it like constituent services, like where you might call the county commissioner and then the staffer calls down and gets to somebody and says, you need to go get this done. Because in our form of government, the staffer, that, the staffer you ought to call is Marie. And, and then she goes and does that, and that's because in our chain of command, the structure is city manager, department heads, staff. And, and then they, she takes all her direction from all of you. And that's how, that is just the crux of how the, the power structure in this charter should work.
So should we not, I mean, I guess the balance is trying to find, you know, we want to serve our constituents. They call us, we tell them to call us.
Sure.
And then we try to help them either get to the right person or can we not like, like I've already had a couple of developers come and say, can you help us, blah, blah, blah? And I've set up a meeting with community development, now should I not do that?
I think you should, you should call your city manager.
Okay.
Okay? Because city manager should be, should have knowledge and engagement for, for everything that goes on.
That's.
Okay? The, the, and then, and when it comes back, when we get to the ethics piece, in the ethics ordinance that you've already passed, it encompasses that 305 about interference. So it's a, it would be, it's an ethical consideration that you should do it, should not do it that way.
You know, it's ironic to me that so many offices, whether it's the county commissioner or even your congressional office, pride themselves on providing these constituent services. I mean, under DeKalb County, if I wanted a pothole really fixed, I'd call Ted Reinhardt or I'd call him, Lay Boyer.
Sure.
And it always amazed me that they spent so much time, you know, doing that sort of thing. Really, if their departments were efficient, we wouldn't have to.
The, the, the whole, this whole theory is one of professionalism and a professional management rather than, than.
It all falls to the city manager.
It's, it's not, it's not like the old war here, you know? This is, this is a, this is a professional, it's a professional management, professional organization, and we have a, we have a chain of command that people need to act under. So that's, that's really what the, the idea is of all of it.
Real quick on the, lucky beginning, the mayor shall set the agenda for all meetings prior to additional hours. We had to begin, I heard the question, two women, the city council.
I agree.
We're not doing that right now, I don't guess, but it's, you know, is that, that's not required, is it?
Well, here's the, here's the, you set the agendas of everything.
Right.
And basically, you set the agendas right now because staff is continuing to work and bring things forward to you as this city continues to grow. And, and as the, as there's, the base of the city is built, and we're doing things that y'all have particular ideas of where you want to go, we're building those things, that starts to change in the model of what you start seeing on your agendas. It's really on targeted pieces that where you want to go see things. And so it'll be really more motivated by, by you all farther down the road. Staff will still come to the mayor and say, these are the things we really need to do this week. Now, if you wanted something, I'm sure you'd call the mayor. The mayor's saying, oh, put that on there, we'll talk about that.
That's not a problem, right?
That's not a problem.
Stop doing that.
But you can. I mean, you could, you know, if you called the mayor, he was going to write an agenda, he'd do it. But what's in the charter is the safeguard. The safeguard that, that, that in the event the, the officer who was in charge of the meeting did not want you to get on the agenda.
Okay.
That you would have the, you have a methodology that you can bring things up. It's not something that we need to use.
Right.
Because we have a council that all works together and wants to talk to each other and get these things done. But this is, this is a safeguard that's built into the charter that allows people to be heard if somebody tries to.
It's not a requirement to safeguard.
That's all it is.
All right, good. Make sure. I've been asking, yeah, no, I've been asking them to send me a written, and they're just not doing it. All right. On this, well, I guess we continue with this section here.
Is there anything else y'all want to go over on this? I mean, I pretty much, where is that?
The, the, one thing on the ethics, I noticed that GMA has a designation, city ethics or something to that effect. I'd like to figure out.
I'd be glad to answer that question.
If I answer it, I would, I would pursue it.
You haven't. Let me tell you what.
We worked it. Okay.
What I provided you in the first day in, in chapter two was an ethics ordinance that has already been approved by GMA previously as an ethics ordinance, as a city ethics. All that's left for you to do, and I've talked to Irish down at GMA, is to pass a resolution that we will propose to, propose, and we'll send it up there after you do their resolution, a certified copy of the ordinance you already have in place. And there's a review by a review committee of attorneys that should not have a problem with it since they've already passed that one before. It meets the criteria. And, and then in the, at the GMA summer conference, then they will award you as your certified city ethics. So I have that all in place, working to be there, and, and Irish said, send it as quick as soon as she can, and she's going to make sure it gets through.
Okay.
That, I've got.
I understand we've headed in that direction, but to have a, a third-party certification, so to speak.
Right.
This, as we got there, I think it's.
We will have that. We, I, I made sure the first, first day you had it because I thought that that was somewhere y'all wanted to go.
Okay.
So it's done, and we just get you a resolution, get it in front of GMA to get, get this, and they always award it at summer conference. So they'll be down at Savannah.
All right. Marie, do you have a thing?
Uh, no, just, I, I agree with, with Bill on his interpretation of the chain of command. Now, one thing I was going to just raise in, in conversation, it does help me to know if staff is being directed because I may have things for them to do. The other thing that is going to be very important because of the makeup of your departments being vendor-oriented, they're all driven by contracts and task orders. So if in the event council approaches staff and asks them to prepare a certain report or develop a certain study or even an ordinance, that could trigger a contract amendment and, or a change order in the contract. So again, as Bill described, you know, the staff's going to want to respond and they're going to want to do what they need to do. And so they'll start working on that, and then all of a sudden, on their side of reviewing and monitoring the contract, somebody in the back office in a building that you're not, you know, involved in is going to notice that, you know, they're doing this kind of work, it's not part of the contract, and the phone call's going to go to the city manager saying, we, we've got an issue here and we're happy to do it, but now it's going to cost $50,000 more. So that's the, the issue that, you know, can be created. Second to that is, and I know, you know, especially with the brand-new city startup, you know, the, the most important thing your citizens are looking for is now they feel like they have a voice. They truly have somebody they can go to that is on the ground and understands the issues that they're discussing, that they don't have to try and describe it to a higher level of government, to the county, that may not be familiar with this particular neighborhood. So with, with that said, when you get that call and as, as Bill described, you'll need to go through your city manager to notify them. And the practice that I have taken on, and we need to talk about this, is that when you do all notify me of something, I'll flip that email to that department head with you copied so that way the department head knows I'm aware of it, proceed, because I don't want to interfere in the conversation. I just want to know about what's going on so that I can be sure that the other requirements you've placed on me, to be sure those departments are performing under, that I can be sure that they're handling the workload. Or again, because it's a vendor-driven department system, that I can't have them coming back to me saying, well, you've got me doing this, this, and this, and now this council member has asked for this, which is the priority? So that creates confusion and then ultimately will trigger a, a change order. But I like the practice of your manager receiving that information and immediately following through, send it in email. There's no point in your manager rewriting what you've asked for. It's just, I think, a practice of sending it via email, copying the council member, and then opening that opportunity for them to discuss because the, I may not have all the answers to your questions, and I don't need to be, you know, your messenger back and forth. Again, it's not to impede the, the progress, it's just to let us, let the manager know the department head will be notified, you'll be copied, and then they can communicate and get any more detail that they need. Now, if it goes beyond that, your manager needs to know because again, if it's going to require work, and, and you'll know that because the staff member will say, yes, and we need to develop this study. Might be good just to double-check to be sure that's within the, the task order. Again, different from a traditional city because everybody's working for the same team under the same budget and, you know, it, you know, everyone's job description is, and other duties assigned. It always ends that way, but not here because those duties are all assigned and costed out per a task order.
But we're still able to, to talk and interact with staff and, and, I mean, can we go by and say, well, what's the latest on that permit or how's that code of compliance, or should we not?
I just, I would say it's self-governance.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is self-governance because.
Level of policy, well, there's no staff. I think we should have a policy, any staff member should, no request, no, no threat of anything. If they have a problem with a council member or mayor, come to them, tell them, they should have, there should be an easy way to report that, to say, can you please, without the fear of being.
Right, that there's any repercussions.
You have that already in the ethics ordinance.
Right.
It's already there. The, the answer to your question.
Whistleblows. We need a whistleblower.
You have that in the ethics. The answer to your question is that you're going to have interaction.
Right.
What, what you want to be careful of is not to direct them. That's the real crux of the issue. Interaction, understanding, all those things that you want to do. You have zoning things. I would have an expectation that, that your community development director is going to brief you on a number of zoning actions before they come before you so you understand the implications of what's going on. So you would hear about those kinds of things. But, but you wouldn't want to direct them to do this, that, or the other. That's, that's really where you flip past the line.
Right.
All right. Real quick, professional service contracts, could you go over that, what the, give us examples?
Okay.
What that is.
An example of that is, is professional services contracts are unique skill set, experience levels that don't necessarily come under or govern by a bid process. You have here later on your agenda, brokerage services. That clearly falls under the purview of the mayor to engage a firm for professional services. Now, we need to talk about how far out does that, that go? The city is, is looking for a, a certain set of skills, experience, and levels of competency. The mayor has the ability to reach out to a number of firms and say, I'd like a proposal from you. Or if it's such a finite skill set, that the mayor may say, I'm reaching out to this individual or this firm because they are expert nationally. That's who we're going to, to use. The mayor, again, has that authority and that prerogative as, as, as the head of the elected body. When it comes to negotiating the cost, let's hand it over to your city manager. City manager, I need this expert level of service. It may be in a particular ordinance where the manager's going to confer with, with the city attorney, but the mayor says, we need this brain surgeon, and this is the brain surgeon that can take care of this section of town, expert, nationally recognized. This is who we want. All right, city manager, this is who I have chosen under, you know, my prerogative and power and authority as the mayor. You need to negotiate that contract. When I negotiate that contract, then that means the mayor has to sign off on the contract. That contract is then put on a consent agenda for the, the council to approve because most likely it's going to exceed the limits of the city manager. And, you know, we have different stages of, of approval for the city manager, and even if it goes beyond that first $10,000 threshold, it has to go. So all contracts have to be, you know, signed by the mayor and they would be placed on the consent agenda. So that's how we look at professional services. Different from bidding out where a number of sources are available to provide a certain skill set and level, and you're reaching out to that professional community, comprehensive plan. You're going to reach out to an umbrella organization of, of consulting firms that can do the comprehensive plan. They'll come in and we'll, we will, in that scenario, have a request for qualifications. Mayor and council will be involved in that, and then the selection process, and then you still turn it over to your city manager to get, very similar and exact as you did with the contracts with the vendors. So then there is the difference. And if I left anything out or further explanation?
I think professional services are, you don't have to bid up. That's the law of the country, you don't have to bid up professional services. Whether, whether, you know, the, the way you, the way you have controlled professional services in this instance is in a budgetary. services in this instance is in a budgetary process. That's what the mayor and council have done, by putting the tight controls on budget. You all have basically required the city manager to come back. I, I believe the city manager, as long as y'all have given direction in the policy, either that or in the budgetary direction of where they're going to go, that she would probably have the, the opportunity to get the professional services. She could pick them, because she's your chief administrator, the officer. The, but as, as we discussed previously, the things that come forward, one of the things, one of the provisos, the dotted line proviso in this charter is that the city manager shall speak and go and talk to the mayor about those things before she would bring them forward to, to you in terms of ordinances. And, and in this situation, as you have tightly controlled the dollars, almost everything is going to come to you in that nature.
All right, well, anything we need to, we think of over the weekend, we can bring up on one day, so appreciate that, and we need to go to the presentation of Kansas City Solicitor.
Mayor, if I could be excused.
Yeah, we're going to vote the rule of sequestration, so.
We understand that.
Whoever's presenting stays in, whoever's not stays out.
Thank you, Mayor.